Yeah, it's good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's councillor Liz Jones and I'm the town mayor of Dunstable. And it's my pleasure to welcome you all here this evening for the 2024 Dunstable Town Meeting. We are required by law as a town council to call a meeting of all of our electors of the parish of Dunstable between the first of March and the first of June and give the opportunity for any elector of the parish of Dunstable to ask questions. The meeting may discuss any town affairs and is not confined to the functions of the town council. And although we may not be able to answer the questions in respect of other authorities, we will certainly take those questions forward to the appropriate people. Tonight is the 39th annual town meeting and this year our theme is the support for our businesses. We're going to begin the evening with presentations from Central Bedfordshire Council around a range of support available to local businesses. We'll then hear from town council and the Chamber of Commerce about their support for businesses. And we'll end the evening with an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters and to also raise any issues relating to the town in the usual way for the annual town meeting. This meeting is being filmed by the council and is being broadcast live over YouTube and will be capable of repeated viewing. It's likely that the cameras will capture your image. By your presence, you're deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting or training purposes. May I introduce you to the rest of the platform party? On my left is the deputy town mayor councillor Louisa Reardon and on my right, the town clerk and chief executive, Mr Paul Hodson. Our guest speakers will introduce themselves as they come up to speak. So the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the 2023 town meeting, a copy of which has been reproduced with the agenda. Is someone willing to move that I sign these as a true record, please? Thank you councillor Beta. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Davies. Those in favour? And against? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the first of our presentations and this is from that Central Bedfordshire colleagues. As I've said, the next item is around a presentation around the funding and support available for local businesses. Over to yourself, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Anna Bosworth and I'm from Central Bedfordshire Council. I'm the head of investment, employment and skills. I'm here to talk to you about our UK Shared Prosperity Fund, supporting local business. I'm just going to give you a bit of an overview, first of all, about UK Shared Prosperity. I've also brought along a number of partners that are working directly with us and you can hear a bit more about in detail some of the support programme that we are offering to businesses across Central Bedfordshire. So the UK Shared Prosperity is part of a suite of funding in the government's levelling up agenda. It's the levelling up agenda, it's four national aims which link to 10 levelling up missions. Within Central Bedfordshire, we have taken the Rural England Prosperity Fund and incorporated it within the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. And that's a capital fund that is available to rural businesses. So as Central Bedfordshire has, it has 4.47 million of UK Shared Prosperity and Rural England Prosperity Fund. And as a council, we made the decision to put £2 million into supporting our local businesses. We also have £2 million to support communities in place and just under, just over £400,000 to support people and skills which will kick off in the next financial year. Within the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, as I mentioned, there is the Communities in Place theme, which is improving community infrastructure and investing in neighbourhoods pride in place. The Supporting Local Businesses, which is about improving both the numbers of jobs and productivity of existing businesses. That's the primary aim. And then People and Skills is about employment support programmes, adult learning or other skills provision. In terms of our business support interventions, we have a number of partners who, most of which are here today, to talk to you a bit more in depth. We have Business Support Startup, Business Support Startup and Entrepreneurship and Social Enterprise. Unfortunately, Winter, who were due to be here, couldn't make it due to unforeseen circumstances. So I'll run through that, I'll try and do my best to talk through their programme. We then have Business Growth Scale Up for Cranfield University as well as Local Business Decarbonisation. Again, Claire will talk about that shortly. Business Innovation, which will be the University of Bedfordshire and Chris has come along. Thank you, Chris, for coming. And then finally, last but not least, Export, which I will hand over to Justin to talk about. So briefly around the Winter, Martin obviously couldn't make it, the Winter Support. So they are delivering the Central Start Programme, which is helping people across Central Bedfordshire with the following free support. It's about learning new skills, CPD accredited, and accessing one-to-one tailored business advice to help them start or grow their own business. So it's very much around that pre-start, startup provision. They also offer specialist advice and resources for early-stage business owners, voluntary community sector and social enterprises to establish themselves and grow their business. They also have access to providing a capital grant scheme. The way that you can access that support, obviously there is the website. You have to complete an expression of interest. They will then, Winter would then contact you with a triage call. Make sure that you're eligible for the provision and then we'll look to put you onto their support. Following that support, you do have the opportunity then to apply for a grant. And there is the contact details there, the email address and the telephone number should you want to make contact with them. I'm now going to pass over to my colleague Claire Bunwell Spencer to talk about some of the Cranfield provisions that they have handled.
Thank you so much, Anna. So it's a pleasure to be here today and see so many people in the room. So I'm Claire Dunwell Spencer. I actually grew up not very far from here, I'm born and bred in Leyton Buzzard and come from a family business background, grew up with two parents, both owning their own businesses. It's kind of made me do what I now do. So I am head of entrepreneurship growth at Cranfield. And I know when I was growing up in Edinburgh, I didn't always think Cranfield was a place that I could access. But I'm here to tell you today, that's absolutely not the case. So for those of you who haven't heard about Cranfield, we're based in a former RAF site halfway between Bedford and Milton Keynes. And we were started after the Second World War when the UK government wanted to take advantage of the aviation technology that had been developed during World War Two. We're a fascinating place, I love it, I get to open doors and find really strange things being done. We've got hydrogen planes taking off at Cranfield, things that you didn't think were possible, if only they're happening at Cranfield. So a little bit about it, we're a slightly unusual university because we're postgraduate only. So that means we don't have degree courses, we only do masters and PhDs. But we also do an extensive amount of work in what we call executive courses. And you might be thinking, well, I'm an executive, why is Claire talking to me? Well, what does that mean? That means that we do business. So we're specialists in technology and management. We have an alumni network of over 70,000 and they're great, they will help you. If you know, you're a Cranfield alumni, they will help you. We're a triple, now a quadruple accredited business school. We are one of the oldest business schools in the UK. There's less than 1% of business schools worldwide that have that quadruple accreditation. And actually, people think we're pretty good at entrepreneurship. We're currently ranked first in Europe for entrepreneurship by Bloomberg Business School Rankings. And we're on your doorstep and we want to work with you. So, and these are some of the people we've already worked with. So we've been working with growing SMEs for over 50 years. And we've worked with really small businesses, we've worked with large businesses, I'll just pick out a few. And you'll see I'll pick out the food and drink ones because people tend to know them or we really like them at Cranfield because they bring their samples to us. So Hotel Chocolat, it's a Cranfield alumni. Thatcher's Cider, Martin Thatcher, you see him in the adverts at the moment for his cider, he's a Cranfield alumni. Then we've got Cobra Beer, Lord Karam Delamore, Cranfield alumni. One really interesting one that's quite local to here, Go Ape. Yeah, they go up in Wigan? Actually, four of the, we have four alumnis in that business and they've got a really interesting story. I don't know if anybody picked up here in Le Paris. Last year, they actually gave 90% of their shares back to their employees as an employee share trust. So some really interesting businesses and from all different types. And don't worry, you don't have to be a technical business to work at Cranfield. We love our business, you know? It's what makes us tick. So what have we got on offer today? And I have to say firstly, thank you so much to Central Bedfordshire Council for making this opportunity available for us to be able to reach out and offer you fully funded scholarships for a range of our courses. The prices of these courses range from £1,000 all the way up to £12,000. And here today, you've got an opportunity to access these free of charge. So the first area I'm going to talk about is business scale up and resilience. And Anna touched on the fact that Winter is also working in this area. So for businesses trading for less than a year, Winter would be the first port of call for any support that you need. But if you have been trading for more than a year, then come and talk to us. And there are some exceptions to that which I'll take you through. So you can apply for one free place for any of the programmes I'm going to show you on business scale up and resilience. And also one free place on any of the programmes I'm going to show you around our decar programmes. And the same goes for the other providers here today. Okay, so here are the programmes that are available to you. And you'll see we split them up into two categories. So the ones at the top are all aimed at owner-managers. So these are the people who are owning and running businesses to really help you look at your growth plans. Businesses with a growth plan grow 33% faster than businesses without. You know, and as owners, having the time to work on your business rather than in it can be really invaluable. So the ones at the top are for you as owner-managers. If you've got a growing team that you also need to skill, the ones at the bottom are for your team members. So I'm going to just show you the ones that are upcoming soon. So if you're interested in business scale up, come and talk to us genuinely, we'll talk through all the individual programmes. But I just wanted to highlight the first three. So what's coming up soon? So Ready for Scale is a 12-week online business growth programme designed to help you to develop your business growth plan. It's specifically designed to work with SMEs with a turnover of about, anything from about 25,000 up to about a million. It's the sort of sweet spot where it really works. And it's totally flexible around the entrepreneur and the owner-manager. You get online support, you get one-to-one sessions with a very specialist business growth advisor. And we've seen people make tremendous leaps during their trajectory on the course. If you've got slightly less time, then Growth Curve is a two-day programme, masterclass programme, where we focus on the economy and how it affects us as business people. And given what we've been through as business people in the last five years, I think we all realise now what goes on around us can have really important effects. It then focuses on finance because cash is always king if you're running your own business. People, because if we don't find the right people, we don't get the right people, how do we grow? And finally, marketing, how do we access our customers? So that's two days, that's in May. And then the one at the bottom, I've only wanted to focus on as well. So I mentioned earlier, if you're still at the startup stage, then go to Winter. But the venture day one is actually for all businesses. And it's our annual entrepreneurship conference that we hold at Cranfield. It is its 16th year, we get some amazing speakers come through and it is a day to bring together our entrepreneurial ecosystem. So if you ever wanted to go and talk to a VC, didn't know how, you wanted to go and find out, well, how do I access university research? That's the way where you can come. And the theme this year is innovate to elevate. And we're going to be looking at three themes, which is entrepreneurship, technology and sustainability. So those are the details for you to contact us if you're interested on the business scale upside. But that's not all. We've also got programmes around local business decarbonisation. And this is a topic really close to my heart in particular. And for us at Cranfield, sustainability means both green and profitable. Because actually, if we can't make it make business sense for the businesses, we're not going to go on that journey. So that's the focus when you come to Cranfield to talk about sustainability. And we look at how can you measure what your business does in terms of your impacts? And how can you build that into business opportunities for you as business people? So we have three programmes on offer for this one. So the first one is Ready for Next Zero Growth. So this is what we call Ready for Scale or steroids. So Ready for Scale is a 12-week programme focusing on where are you now? Where would you like to be and how are you going to get there? Ready for Next Zero Growth does the same, but you also get an additional four modules focused on understanding your carbon footprint and what it means for your business. If you're not interested in the business growth side, but you're still interested in that decarbonisation journey, then the programme for you is Climate Action Planning. This is a two-day deep dive into understanding the impact of your business, what you can do about it and how you can actually attain advantage from it. One of the things we find when we work with businesses, they usually think they don't have an impact. That's not true. We also find that when we work with businesses to reduce their carbon, something else happens. They also save money, making their business more profitable. So even if you're not particularly interested just on the, you know, what's happening in the planet, if you're interested in the profitability of your companies, come on the course. And then if you're at the other end where you're like, I'm not sure if I'm interested or not, I don't know enough about it, then Sustainability Game is the one for you. It's a one-day workshop, we developed it for COP26. We were the only university that presented on the main stand at COP26. And this game, and I won't spoil it for you, transports you on a journey to 2050, to see the potential things that might happen. For you to think about what would you have to do as a business person if that happened. Really fascinating game, you're just getting into that topic. Okay, so key dates, Climate Action Planning is July, Sustainability Game is September and Ready for Next Zero Growth starts in October. Again, the same details, same contact details. Lovely lady called Sandra Edwards, would be delighted to speak to any of you. And then we have one more offer, as I said, Central Bedfordshire have been very kind. So we also just recently relaunched a Green Business Network. There's been a Green Business Network in the county for over 20 years and it's just been handed to Cranfield to look after. This is a fascinating group where we'll be meeting four times a year to discuss key topics around green business and clean tech. We also have an awful lot of benefits behind it, such as access to a free carbon calculation tool, huge benefits in terms of access network. And we have a limited number of places, some have already gone, for businesses in Central Bedfordshire to have a one-year annual membership for that network, which would entitle you and another member of your staff to attend that network for your charge. So you're probably thinking, what do I do if I'm interested? Well, I've got QR code up here and if you have got your phones out and you're interested, you can actually use that QR code to get onto the application form. It'll take you about five to six minutes to complete. And at the bottom, you'll see you've got a selection, let's say it's business intervention. You just choose the course you're interested in, you need to complete a form for each of the courses that you want to do and then we will be in contact. If you're not yet at the application stage, just drop us an email, we'd be delighted to have a call with you. And would you believe, there's still one more gift left. So, and this is only if you complete the programmes. Once you have been on one of our programmes to develop your business growth plan or your carbon reduction plan, depending on the programme that you go on, we then have an opportunity to provide grants to you to put those plans into action. So one of the things people quite often say to me as an SME is, I would love to do this, but actually I don't have the money to do it yet. Well, this takes that reason away. So once you've completed one of our programmes, I think you can apply for a grant on the business side and a grant on the green side, so you've got a double whammy here. You can apply for a grant of up to £5,000 for the capital cost of putting your plans into action. I think it's a fantastic initiative that the council have brought together and it really focuses on what the businesses need in terms of actually getting these things into action. So again, contact details are there. It's been a pleasure to see you all tonight. If anybody would like to talk to me afterwards, I'd be very happy to talk to you. I'm now going to just leave those up on the wall as I pass over.
Thanks very much, Claire. Good evening, everybody. My name's Chris Fox and I work for the University of Bedfordshire as a business partnership project manager. So thank you very much, Anna from CBC, for inviting us along today. We are at the moment apparently first in the country for social enterprise startups and that's something that we tend to try and support all the way, including not-for-profit organisations. I was talking to a gentleman over there, men in sheds. We are, I don't know, third in the country for graduate startups, still operating after three years. I don't know whether we can surpass Claire's Business School award, but we've certainly got the School Business Charter Award. And we're first in England and second in the UK in the University Green League. So those are just some of the facts about where the University of Bedfordshire stands. In terms of the Shared Prosperity Fund, our particular niche in the delivery of the programme is around innovation. And when we talk about innovation, we're looking at things that will improve the productivity of a business, things that are helping the business to grow into new products and services for the business. And the way that we're trying to support that is we're offering one-to-one consultancy from our academics. So we have a number of academics in different skill sets, anything from obviously things like marketing, legal, accountancy, things like that. We can help a business with some small support. We also have students, so we have students that are studying, degree level students, masters and PhD. So we sometimes try and offer them a real-life experience to help a business locally. They get some real-life experience in delivering a project and obviously the business gets some support from what they're able to produce from that. We're also quite big in trying to get graduates the opportunity to actually get some work. So we offer a scheme where it's not just for our graduates, graduates from our university, we can also offer that for many graduates to actually go into a business to help them put their innovation plans into practice, so we will subsidise graduate from there. We also have some grant funding, so again, as Anna and Claire have said, that we've got the Rural SPF funding, which is for capital items, so we can go with that. We also have a number of workshops and short courses that we're putting on. So at the moment, these are the ones that we've got scheduled to come up. So we've got Strategic Marketing Essentials, so we've got Growth Through Transformation. So that's our business strategy workshop, helping a business to plan its growth. We've also looked at bid writing and grant application side of things and recruitment, retention and training needs analysis. So it's quite often a business that's looking to grow, perhaps doesn't know how to go about finding the right staff or giving their existing staff opportunities to train and improve. So that's the kind of thing that we do there. So apologies for rushing through that, it was sort of short notice and I don't think I could surpass the detail that Claire went into. But there's a chance for questions later on, once we've all done our presentation, so thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Justin, Chief Executive Secretary, Chamber of Commerce, and I've been asked along today to talk about our project on UK SPF. So one of the things that we're looking at is the international trade side for businesses. I believe I've got another slot on the agenda, so I won't go through this, I'll wait till, wait till that slot. But what I'm here to talk today is about international trades and supporting businesses with their global trade ambitions. And I have a confession to make, I'm not the expert in international trade. My colleague Paula, that's three rows in, is the person you need to speak to if you need about the technicalities. Give them a wave, Paula, so they know it's you. So what do we do in Bedfordshire? So we're currently working with 183 companies that export roughly £115 million worth of goods to 101 countries. And leading up to Brexit and directly after Brexit, we supported roughly 1,000, coming up to 1,000 companies to help them with that transition. So what do, I thought I'd give you a flavour of the things that the companies that we're working with export. So we have the weird and the wonderful, so tattooed sumo restless statue to Japan, we helped a company export to there. My personal favourite, the little car company, so that DV5, I think it is, replica of the James Bond Aston Martin machine guns in there were sent for some lucky child in Massachusetts just before Christmas. That is a proper Christmas present, that's for sure. Luxury yachts, tables, bespoke wooden furniture, Shih Tzu super yachts all around the world. Military scopes, some very close to here, naan breads to India and Pakistan, chocolates to the Middle East and just as you probably were feeling hungry, bio implants for human transplant at the same time, let's get that off. It's disgusting, but it's true. So as you can see, there's a wide range of things that we help companies locally export. So where can we help? So Paula, my colleague, is the expert in this side of things. So international trade documentation, ensure your goods get to market. Be certificates of origin, UK EUR1s, 88 carnets and customs declarations. We're one of the only chamber teams in the country that can do every single thing documentation-wise for getting your goods out of the country. We're pretty proud of that and that's down to Paula, an absolute expert. So what else? Advice and support around the technicalities of trade. Things like international commercial terms, INCO terms, the contracts effectively allow you, your suppliers and the customers, who's responsible for what. Rules of origin, really important, particularly around after Brexit and around tariffs now and customs standards and licences. One thing that people probably don't know much about us, there's 52 chambers in the network in the UK. Also, there's 75 British Chambers of Commerce internationally. So we've worked recently with Chile, Malaysia, Indonesia and that's all about matchmaking businesses to opportunities in those countries. That's something that we can help local businesses do. So coming down to the UK SPF, what can we do for you? Well, there's some one-to-one advice and guidance around everything international trade. Leveraging our international network, as I mentioned, help raise your profile with potential customers, sales agents across the globe. I'd help you identify new markets. So if you, if you make something, you'll have something that's called an HS code. And through that HS code, we can see where the demand is globally. So if there's something you're interested in exporting to new markets, give us a shout, we can certainly help. And something that we've recently brought on board under this project is our international and marketing strategy. And something that we've recently brought on board under this project is our international and marketing strategy. So we're working with a local company to help assess your website, your gateway to your product or service, and help you develop an international strategy for your marketing. That's it for me. I'll come back to us later on the agenda. Is it okay to leave that up?
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. I'll be open to questions.
Okay. So on this particular agenda item, thank you so much for all of our guest speakers. Really informative and good to hear. Are there any questions for members in the audience that you'd like to pose at this point of the meeting on what you've heard so far? No? Okay. So we'll move on. And obviously if questions come back as we go through the meeting, we can take them then. So we're going to move on now to the presentation from our colleagues from Dunsborough Town Council about the town centre management services available. So Annette and Becky.
I'm sure it's a presentation by a standard of speech. I haven't got the easy bit to introduce Annette. First of all, it's lovely to see so many friendly faces here this evening. The town council has been committed to delivering town centre management in various forms for, I'm sure, 20 years or so. And I think that's testament to say that whilst we don't take any money from the business rates, we know that to have a vibrant town centre is so important to create that sense of place and identity that means so much to our residents. And that's why there is that commitment to continue to do that. Annette is best placed to tell you about all the activities that we do as our town centre manager. So I am going to hand over to Annette. I'm happy to take any questions afterwards.
Thank you. So I'm Annette. I'm town centre manager. My job. It's quite a huggy job and that's how I describe it when I explain what do I do. I try to hug the town. And that hugging involves hugging the businesses in the town, going round there. I'm sure most of you have seen me run up and down the high street, pop into your shops, come and see you even in the quadrant as I go in there and do some events in there with Diane. So I am round the whole town. My hugging also involves our town centre toilets, which we manage, also the Christmas lights and then the flags and the decorations down Middle Row. We also put together Middle Row Markets, which has really grown in the last few years. And we see that as a real starting point for the businesses that potentially do grow into town. And we have seen that take place. We've had four businesses that have started in Middle Row Market and gone on to take some shops in the quadrant. So it does work. Just they just need that support and that time to grow, which is hopefully what our service is doing. So our service is all about information and try and get as much information out there to the businesses, to the public as much as we can, so that that growth can take place. We also do events, which we really enjoy doing. We do them in Middle Row Markets. We do them on their own as part of Twilight and Ashton Square Day. And hopefully that brings in the public and more community engagement, which hopefully should then actually speed through into the town and help the businesses in the town. We've also recently, for the last year, had street food markets, which has also then helped our evening businesses with people coming into town on a Thursday evening, which wasn't taking place before. That has grown really well and they're back here for the second year and we've just started relaunching that again. We had the first one last Thursday, which went really well. As I say, I do work in partnership with the quadrant and we do hold about four events with them. Our biggest one is our Dino Day and we've got a really special one in July. So come along, come and support us in Middle Row and in the quadrant. And of course, please come and see me when I'm going through the town in the businesses. I'm more than happy to speak to anybody and point people in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Are there any questions from you guys for Annette at this point of the meeting? Okay. We'll continue with our next presentation then from the Bedfordshire Chamber of Commerce.
Sorry, everyone. You've lucked out to get me twice today on the agenda. So I just wanted to thank you for giving me that slot on the agenda, just to spend two minutes talking a bit about us as a Chamber of Commerce. Not many people do really know or understand what we do as an organisation. So to be given a platform is really, really important for us. So as we left the office, we had 735 businesses in our membership. And they range from sole traders all the way up to multinationals and employ roughly 55, actually gone up to about 56,000 people in the region. And predominantly they're SMEs. 95% of the organisations we work with. But every other multinational in the county are members of the network. So as I said, they range from sole traders all the way up to those large corporates, likes of Centre Parks, London Luton Airport, Lockheed Martin, all organisations that we work with. And I guess broadly speaking, we can split our membership into three categories. Roughly a third are engineering and manufacturing organisations. The other third is B2B services, marketing, accounting, solicitors, all of that type. And then the other third is literally everything in between, from a window cleaner to education. And what do we do? Well, again, in a nutshell, we do three things. We provide a platform for people and businesses to connect, ultimately to do business together, to share, to collaborate. Best shared best practice. We're seeing that a lot actually, particularly within manufacturing at the moment. Lots of organisations really interested in working together to see what good looks like within their businesses and sharing. So that conduit is something that we do. What else? So raise your profile as a business. So contact wise, we probably have close to 20,000 contacts locally. So if you want to get your brand out there, whether it's your personal brand or your business brand, you can use our channels to spread the word and the good news stories about your organisation. Also networking events. So Paula, once a week roughly?
Yeah, a couple of months, really.
Yeah. So networking, networking events, and that can range from connect over coffees, especially for sole and micro businesses. 50, 60 people are there. All up to business leaders, peer-to-peer stuff and a whole range. So we've got on the 30th of May, 31st of May, we, we, Bank of England have reached out to us and they want to present in Bedfordshire. So we've got Hugh Peel coming to present to businesses in Bedfordshire. So if you're interested, give us a shout and come along. We'd love to see you there. As I mentioned, international trade, not my specialist, but definitely Paula's. And I won't go through that again, but we've worked with, as I said, nearly 200 businesses. And then the final thing, we are known predominantly as a voice of the local business community. But actually, we set ourselves slightly more than that, play shapers, making sure that Bedfordshire is the best place for our employees, for our businesses to live, work and play effectively. And one of the things shaping that community predominantly at the moment is skills. We're seeing a lot of businesses tell us that they can't find the right talent locally, right, those with the right employability skills. So we're working with further education predominantly and businesses to help close that gap. And that's us, I guess, in a nutshell. We'd love to see you part of the network. And we'd love to see you at some of our events. So feel free to come along. Grab myself Paula, Richard after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions on that particular piece?
We've got off nightly.
Can I just ask a question? Might be for Anna, I don't know. Generally, in terms of the UK SPF programme that's running out, which sounds really generous and impressive as an offer. I think that's a really great presentation. How successful has the take-up been? How's the programme going? Are there any particular groups you're looking to target, businesses you're looking to target in the area? And what can we do to help that?
So to kick off, so we started the programme in November, December. I think it was a bit of a slow, a slow start. But actually, the take-up has been gradual, but it's actually getting a lot of momentum. But the latest has been, I think we've had 288 businesses that have come on board, that have expressed an interest and have gone through to application stage. So we're really seeing that drive. You know, we're out there trying to market the programme essentially. In terms of sectors and types of businesses, we're open. I think if you've got, you know, if you want to grow, come to Cranfield. If you want to innovate, come to U O B. If you want to export, we've got the chamber. We've got key partners. And I must mention Winta, sorry, if you want to start up a business. So we've got, we've got all aspects really covered. So I'd say, you know, if you are in any of those categories, then please do contact us. I have, there is a slide at the end of our presentation that you can contact the council directly. So if you're not sure which one to come to, contact us directly and we'll try and help and support you to guide you.
And in theory, you can use all the partners. You don't have to just stay with one partner. You can jump in with each partner and take what you need from them.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, every partner knows what we're delivering. So it doesn't matter what door you knock on. Don't worry, we'll make sure you get the right person and the right support. So just pick up the phone. Do you want me to put the contact details on?
You can, yeah. But no, we're true partnership essentially. We're working collaboratively together and these guys know the area as well. So they know the local geography. We've got great contacts with a lot of businesses already. But you know, if you know businesses or you are a business and you would benefit from this, then please do, do contact us. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Claire.
Yeah.
You mentioned at the start that the Cranfield University is there for postgraduate students. And then, and excuse me if I missed it, and then you went on to explain all the offerings that were available that were funded by CBC. Am I right in thinking that you don't have to be a postgraduate to access those courses?
Absolutely. So I think that's sometimes something that worries people about Cranfield. And I want to reassure you, anybody can access our programmes. In fact, what's unusual about Cranfield is actually a lot of the people we work with have never had a first degree. And I think what makes us different and why we're so highly ranked is the practical application of our courses. You know, we're talking about real-life businesses. We give you real-life case studies. You get expertise from people who've been in your position. So this is very much tailored for SMEs and, you know, and we look at that sort of rollercoaster of a journey that you get in business.
Just one more. I'm sorry. And the green group, the green business group? You mentioned that there were several memberships that were available for free, a year's membership, but that the number was limited. Do you know roughly how many are available?
So we've got at this moment in time, another 20 available. We will have slightly more in a couple of months. But at the moment, I've got 20 available as for the whole of central Bedfordshire. So if you're interested, please sign up and don't wait.
Thank you. There's a hand at the back there. It's the councillor tomorrow. Did you have a question?
Appreciate it. Okay. So can I just say thank you to, you know, the panel for the presentation? I think it was really good. And we, you know, I can speak for businesses here. That I would say we appreciate the opportunity to hear from you. I just, I've got two questions. First to CBC. I just wondered how this, you know, this presentation here today was advertised to every businesses in Dunstable and the wider area. Because I think such an incredible information, you could have got more businesses in this room. You know, have we done enough to get more people in the room? That's one. My second question is to the Chamber of Commerce. You did say the Bank of England is coming. I just wonder if you have an inside information or whether or not they're going to be dropping interest rates. You know, if we get an inside job from you will be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Paul, do you want to come in on that one?
Yeah, I think the question about tonight isn't a fair question for CBC. So tonight is, the annual town meeting is hosted by the town council. It's not a council meeting. It's hosted by the town council. So we promoted the meeting on social media, did a press release in our usual way. We don't have an easy mechanism of contacting all businesses. And if we had started earlier, we could have contacted more and done the communications better. So apologies that we haven't contacted all the businesses in the way which we'd like to. What I will say is tonight is being streamed on YouTube and recorded and we're going to make lots of effort to put that out and use social media to, and the information shared tonight, to put it out around our networks and through the business community. So maybe we could have done better advertising. Thank you to everyone who has come. We are going to make lots of effort to use and promote the materials we've gathered.
Thank you.
Hi. My question is for CBC. I am a CBC councillor, so you know. Sorry. I mean, so the community grant scheme, the bidding closed for that in November. Is there due to be another round of bidding? Is there any more money? That's it.
Okay. So that's in the communities in place side. That's not actually my area of, but my understanding is there may be further funding. I think that's something that the council is actually looking at. There is other funding available for next year. So it works on a financial basis, financial year basis. So I don't have the answer for you tonight, but it's something that I know that the team that are leading the whole of the UK SPF programme is looking at. So I'm sure we'll be able to announce in the near future.
Okay. So we're going to move to the next part of the agenda then now, which is the questions from electors. What I could, can I ask is if when you do want to raise your hand and you want to ask your question, if you could stand to speak and if you could just give us your name and your postcode, please, just so that we can clarify that you are electors of this parish. So do we have any public questions, please, from anybody in the audience today? We do have CBC members here as well as representation from the police as well. So if there are questions, we can attempt to answer. If not, we will take the questions away. Wendy?
Thank you. Wendy Baiter, LU54W. Also a town councillor. My question is for CBC. After reading Facebook today, saw that New Vista Homes is scrapping their work. Are they going to build the houses still across the road? Or if not, could they not move the building that they were going to build in the Aztec Park to that site and then keep some green space?
Do we have anybody from central Bedfordshire that would like to take that question? Or is that a question that we need to take away? Councillor?
Can't give you a complete answer, Wendy. I can tell you that that decision was announced today. And at this time, we wouldn't even know whether or not MVH will build that. They are continuing the buildings they've actually laid bricks on in the north there. This one, it's big debateable. Planning has been approved for that, as blocks of flats, as I call them, as you know. I don't like them. I'd rather we put that space for the public and build a five-side triple pitch or pickleball court or something that could be used as an open space because that's important for people's mental health. I'll put that view. Others will have their views. I expect the flats will get built because the planning's been granted. That will be taken up possibly by another developer, possibly finished by MVH. And I'll continue resisting or I expect a fight.
So thank you councillor Kensington Gurney, who is a central Bedfordshire councillor and a town councillor for those in the audience that aren't aware who he was. Thank you. Any other elector questions? Yep, there's a hand at the back there. Sarah?
Sarah Woodruff, LU54HR. Yeah, I'm just wondering what the progress is with Priory House. I heard at some point that the money was run and run out with it. That might not be right. Or is there some more money coming? Or is it just going to be sort of the state that it's in is not really very desirable and what the progress is on that. Can I ask what's happening where the doctors used to be? Because at the moment, that's getting more and more vandalised and people are jumping over the physic garden fence, which isn't helpful.
I'm not sure we've got the answer to that because that's a private property, private piece of land, but it's something that we can talk But it's something that we can talk about with our safety community officers and everything to see what we can do. But Becky, you will take your question about Priory House.
Thank you for that question, Sarah. So Priory House, as we know, has been poorly for some time. It's fair to say that the extent of the works and the repairs that are required, that we thought the High Street Heritage Action Zone would cover, is way beyond the scope of that work and the budget that was available for that. We have received additional money from Historic England, two lots of, and also additional money from the lottery. We haven't spent all of that money yet. Work is continuing. It might not look like it at the moment, but it's actually work that's taking place inside the house to really understand the extent of the repairs that are required. So there's a lot of taking off of historic plaster, conserving where we need to, and then understanding what's going on within that building. We are hopeful that, I think after, towards the end of April, we'll have a far better understanding of the condition of that building. That it's gone from, you know, various different uses over the centuries. And it's fair to say that not one generation has been kind to it over those hundreds of years. But not necessarily intentionally either. It's just the way in which building practices have kind of changed over the years. It's just meant that it's kind of found itself now at quite a desperate stage. Once we have a clear guideline of kind of what repairs need to take place, we'll then have further conversations with Historic England and with the lottery. We'll then know exactly how short we are in regards to the funding deficit. And then we'll commence conversations about what funding might be available from the lottery and from Historic England. And then we would be encouraged, we know, to place another application into both those organisations. They are as committed as the town council is to repairing Priory House. But we also know now that it's not going to be a quick fix and we are going to be in it for a little bit longer. But rest assured that the town council is doing all that it can to make sure that it does get brought back into public use as soon as possible. At the moment, the only area that can be used is the gift shop and the tea, and the kitchen associated with the tea rooms. We don't know whether or not, when it comes to some of the repairs that are required in the building, whether or not those rooms will also be affected for a short period of time. And we won't know that until, I think, towards the end of April, when we get a complete new plan of to how they think we need to repair that building. At the moment, we've got over 120 acres holding Priory House up. You know, those walls are very old, using a stone that really isn't ideal for building. The chalk is notoriously soft and it is done very well, you could say, for the 800 years or so. But actually now it needs some TLC. So please bear with us, but be assured that it's in hand, but it's a long journey that we're on.
Becky, I saw a hand over there.
Thank you, yes, my name is Ian Coulter, it's LU63TU. One part is an observation and the other part is two questions. The observation is that the roads in our area are appalling. I'm just wondering when the drains are going to actually collapse on the High Street South coming north? Because they're getting deeper and deeper every time I drive down there. Old Hill is in an appalling condition, as is Laisa Road. So I suppose my two part question is this. One is what are you doing about it and when are you going to do it? And the second question is, a lot of my friends are actually having to replace their tyres. So when I replace my tyres, do I send my bill to you?
Okay, can I ask if any of our CBC members wish to make a comment on this particular question, please?
Thank you. On me on, yes. So one question was about potholes. As you will be aware, the current council is using the budget that was set by the previous council. And last year, there was no increase in council tax. So we're very limited to using the funds from the previous council. Okay, so going forward, we have a budget for road maintenance, but we are limited, as you will know, because finances are very limited. However, repairs I've seen have been done very well. All the roads I've been around have been done very well, as far as I'm concerned. Okay? Yeah, well, the ones we haven't done, the problem is, the problem is the money ran out in January. And since then, it's been anything that's been planned and has been financed or emergencies. Also, you want to reduce the money that people get paid in order to do the work. So everybody else who's got a job should reduce their money.
Okay, thank you councillor Gurney.
What was the second question? Do you send your bill to me or to the council? Well, no, you don't.
Can I have a go at that question? I'm also a CBC councillor and a town councillor and I have a car and I drive all over the country. The pothole situation is not unique to Bedfordshire. I was in Portsmouth last week. It's because we are nationally short of funding for our roads. And it's not particularly about the authority. We have expanded the repairs in the last six months. We've geared up, we've got a new contract, a new supplier. They have now got all the right equipment, as far as I know. They didn't have the right equipment. Yeah, it's a cock up, but I'm telling you the truth. They didn't have the right equipment on day one. They have got the right equipment. They are catching up. You've seen some work done on Luton Road in the last few days. Kirkstone Drive's been relayed, that's gone very well. Great Northern Road's got some repairs and they're good. The thing is, they won't do all the repairs with such a backlog immediately. They just won't do it. But they are aware of it and they are working on it. And they are working on it right across the Central Bedfordshire. So that's not, they're all done. But we are very aware of it as councillors and the council officers at CBC are very aware of it too. They've been made aware of it by us. And we've had the highways guys down here and we've shown them and they've taken it back. And other highways people have been down and listened to what we've said. But that doesn't mean they haven't got a wand to fix it with. There's no magic wand for this, but we are aware of it and we are on the case. If you can prove that your tyre was damaged by a certain pothole, and that's difficult, some people have done it. Yes, you can send your bill to Central Bedfordshire Council and they will pay it. And I suggest what you do is say that you are absolutely convinced that your tyre was ruined by a pothole. Send your bill in. Whether or not it'll get paid, I can't guarantee that. But what it will do is it'll put a rocket up whoever's supposed to be fixing those potholes. It's rude, it's a bad way of behaving, but an element of misbehaviour is acceptable on this, in my opinion. Because nationwide, as I say, I went down to Portsmouth and you didn't believe that road. We're actually doing really quite well. And we are fighting back, Luton Road, Great Northern Road, Kirkstone Drive. We have some success. You're right, it's only good once we've succeeded across the county. But I do apologise on behalf of the council for getting so far behind, but we are.
Thank you. I've got a hand in front of Kensington, they've got that gentleman there, so. Have you got a question, Matt?
Hello. Business decarbonisation. Dunsborough Town Council, we have a net zero target. Is it a good idea to have a, like, a melding of minds between university, Dunsborough Town Council? Maybe we could send someone from Dunsborough Town Council on, of course, so that it could maybe help with decarbonisation of the town council. Good idea?
The town council are a learning organisation and we would very happily send any willing member of staff. I would also say that CBC have recently run a course on decarbonisation, which something like 20 town council staff have been through the course. And it's been excellent and as part of our annual appraisal process, all those 20 staff are now writing up their plans for decarbonisation within their roles. And that's feeding into the council's work as well. So that's been a quick one, but very much happy to support any town council staff to learn.
And I also happen to know, at Central Bedfordshire level, they've been working very closely with Cranfield around decarbonisation. We use our campus as a living lab. So, you know, we often invite people onto the site to actually see things in situ, to see solutions. Because if you think about what Cranfield looks like, for those who haven't been to Cranfield, it's almost got the facilities of a small town. So, you know, we have our own airport, we have two hotels, we have family housing, we have halls of residence, large hangars, old commercial buildings, new commercial buildings. And actually, we use it as a living lab and we're always very happy to share knowledge between us. Thank you. So Matt, would you be able to pass the microphone to that gentleman there, please? Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Siamese, I live out of LU63JF. I live in Dunsborough for already three years. I have my own business here and I've got some questions and I would like to share my observations from the past three years. So first of all, these things in my business, in my kind of, so while I'm observing this area, never exist. I said, I never came across of these things, what I've seen today. So I'm very glad that there's something happening, maybe I will use as a business owner. However, I noticed recently some arguments between independents and the other. But so I find it a little bit childish that you wash your laundry in public on Facebook. But you can approach the businesses with such important informations. Shame on you guys, whoever takes part of these things, it's really, really bad. And I'm not following on the right, left, central wing, I don't care, I just live here. And after three years here, I think I made a wrong decision moving here to Dunsborough. Looking for a high street and area here, the businesses are dying. Empty shops, parking, you promise free parking, so we've got the increase in price. I'm observing my council tax recently and bill, sorry, forgive my English, it's in my first language. So we've got this price rise, of course, that was named as a four per cent, yes. And then we've got a green bins, which was very controversial. However, I've noticed one thing which wasn't clear very much. We've got a rise comparing with the previous year. That's correct, that's an increasement within the council tax bill comparing with the previous year. However, it's not accurate, I think. You say it was a four per cent something. In my case, with my tax, council tax band is about nearly £100. However, if you valued a green bin collection for £50 and you're not providing that comparing with the previous year, that means that you cut the services which cost £55. So imagine going to the shop, you tend to buy a milk, two litres of milk for £2. Now you are giving me a one litre still for £2. So we have cut of services, but are they included in this estimate how much was the rise of a council tax? I don't think so. And not many peoples try to bend their head and do the math. That literally from a four per cent that someone was proud, okay, we didn't increase that much. It's actually over seven if I add the £55 of services that I'm not having. So my questions will be, again, the potholes. Yeah, we're still going with the budget, but guys, for Christ's sake, you've been a year here. Stop pulling the things what happens before. We can go further and further, maybe go back to the Second War. Today is today, stop talking about the past. You are here one year, what you have done to run this council. You literally have to imagine this thing as a business. You've got all of the power to make it profitable, make some income to these things. But hopefully not with increasing prices for parking and things like that. You want to support the local businesses. So if you increase the parking, it won't welcome more people coming to the city centre, town centre, sorry. Example with the potholes, I'm very, that will be actually my question, sorry for a monologue. How are you processing potholes from a fixed my street? I've got an example from my street and it's an interesting thing. Recently, I live at Spoondale. At the very end of Spoondale was a new build for peoples with learning difficulties. I guess that was built by council, was a council investment. So narrow road, heavy machinery coming all day long through my narrow street. They were running over pavements, which is not exactly, doesn't follow the highway code. But well, they didn't have options. Right now, we've got quite a few potholes. And one I'm observing from this size, less than one feet, is that size, it's a bug in the cradle right now. So it was locked in December, again, end of December, January, February. I just checked right now, it was locked recently on Thursday 21st March. So I understand that the things have to be fixed, they are in the queue, blah, 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 of course. But you're losing money. Is it easier to fix something like that or something like that? And I understand the process, it takes ages. And we can use an example, my business, I run services for fitness clubs around London. And in England, I go to Birmingham, everywhere, the potholes are issue everywhere. But we are here, we are talking about the Dunsborough. I don't need an example from Manchester or Glasgow. We're here, give me an answers from here. Why it take it so much time to fix the simple things like a potholes? And please don't use the argument that our previous budget.
Thank you for your questions and your points.
And one more thing, green bin collection, you're stopping that, so tomorrow is my last collection. Where I can drop my green bin? Or where I will send, where are I supposed to send the charges for storing it? Because I understand the bin isn't mine. So there was something said that they will be collecting in July? And you will give a time citizens to reconsider the options? Guys, July, April, May, don't be silly, couple of months. So is it okay to drop it on Thursday in front of the council offices? Or they will be collected on Wednesday with a green bin waste? When you have a plan to increase the price, you need to have a plan for a next step. So yeah, maybe someone could answer for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your points and your questions. And I think the majority of which are Central Bedfordshire councils' questions. And we've heard from our councillors here already this evening. If you can let me finish, please. Okay, what I would say is I totally agree with you about the social media and the communications between councillors and between parties. It needs to stop. I absolutely agree with you. You know, we are in it as a council and as town councillors. I would like to think that 17 of us in this room tonight are there because we want to do what's right for our residents. And I certainly want that to happen. You know, and I know others in this room feel exactly the same, how you've expressed that this evening as well. So I just hope that everybody, you know, continues to look, see how they can better themselves in how they manage their social media activity. With regards to your green bins and the free parking, I can't answer your questions. I'm a resident like you. I've chosen not to renew my, to pay out my green bin. I've requested my green bin to be collected. Supposedly it got collected on Friday, but I looked out of my room today, out of my lounge door today, and it's still sat on my driveway. So that isn't the case, is it? So I think there's lots of questions and I'm not sure those in the room will be able to give you the answers. Councillor Gurney, I'm happy for you to try to answer the questions. But if you don't have the answers, I think it's only right that we actually go back to Central Bedford with the questions and get official responses and be able to give the resident an official response.
I'm quite happy not to try and answer your questions. I'm quite happy to try and answer your questions, openly and openly if I can. Or I won't, I don't want.
I think for the benefit of all residents for Dunstable, I think we need to our Central Bedfordshire Council to give us the official responses to your points raised. And I think that would then benefit all of our residents across Dunstable.
I'm literally, I'm not making the things up.
No, no, and I totally understand, I totally agree.
I'm only observing these things on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Actually, the better job right now than the council is doing, don't let Dunstable die. There's a better communication, this is how I know about this meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
Nice to meet you, we'll have a chat after.
Okay, thank you, we will get the points. And if afterwards, if you could see Georgia at the back and make sure we've got your contact details, we'll make sure the answers to your questions when we receive them.
On the Facebook.
Yeah, we will make sure we get them for you. Okay, any other questions, please? Yes? You can just.
I'm pretty loud.
We need it, we need it to live.
We need to hear you at home.
Hi, I'm going to be LU54UH. I've lived in North London my whole life, moved to Dunstable because it's better housing, cheaper, as we all know. I'm proud of the development that I've seen since like the last seven years. I'm so proud of like the events that you guys do for the children, for the community. The only thing that I think we're lacking in is supporting new business ideas and helping the younger generations come up and say, actually, do we need another barber shop in Dunstable? Do we need another charity shop? Do we need another nail shop? It's just full on and everywhere you go in the town shop, like, it's just another barber shop. And it's another charity shop and it's another, and it's nice. I like that anyone's open to all these like businesses. But I just feel like, isn't there room for new ideas? And moving along with like, I don't know, just being a bit more like on trend? You know, like, you know, like making it a bit more upkeep? I mean, I think we've got some beautiful buildings here, but they just look really sad. They're not been up like, they're not been kept a bit well. Like potholes, yeah, okay, they are a bit of an issue. But I think the buildings itself, they just look a bit, I feel like they need more love and caring. You've got really lovely places that you could have really good Nando's and a really good Rachos or you really could, another business or another, you know, anyone else, he's paying for this nice stuff. I just don't see, why do we need more barber shops? Why do we need more like places like this? I don't know, I just don't get it. Yeah, but like, well, we're in London here, the last seven years, they have been a massive improvement and I can see that. But I just feel like we're lacking in so many different areas. We're not giving up to the generation that's coming up. Like, we need a youth zone, a proper one, one that goes like one environment with new hats and it's brilliant. It's fantastic. It's not like the one that you have here where there's like just computer games and a few tennis balls and like table tennis and stuff like that. I mean, housing, do we need any more housing? We've got so many warehouses. We need a youth zone for the next generation. We need to be thinking about our children and all those kids who've got lockdown, you know, during Covid with social anxiety and stuff like that. They're all out on the streets, on their bikes. Sorry, but up to no good, some of them, you know? And it's quite sad, but they don't have anywhere to go. They don't have that place. Why aren't they here?
Thank you. So we're going to get Becky to give you some response to some of the points you've raised. But thank you for your comments about the events programme that the town council put on. You know, that is the jewel in our crowd where we do get lots and lots of residents every year coming to our free events programmes. So we are grateful for that. Becky, if you'd like to respond.
Matt, I want to capture your energy. Honestly, this is what we kind of want, we want residents like you that have got ideas and have seen what's going on and observed, but come with a positive stance. So let me see if I can answer a couple of them and I know Annette would really like to answer a few as well. In terms of the retail mix, councils don't really have an awful lot of say in it. If there's planning permission there for that use, then we can't stop those shops coming into being. We don't own any shops, Central Beds only own a few. So that can be really tricky and really frustrating that we can't affect it as much as we'd like to. In terms of the dilapidation of some of those units as well, the older buildings. So the town council for the last four years have tried really hard with 2.4 million pound programme with the Hydrocage Action Zone, which ends at the end of this month, to try and get landlords to improve their shop fronts. It's been really difficult. Landlords have got other priorities. Landlords may not be invested in the town like we are and you are. Some of those older buildings, actually, how much it costs to repair them is astronomical. And actually becomes, it doesn't become profitable for them either. So we've tried really hard, you've seen some, hopefully some improvements. Moors is nearly there, but still a long way to go. Moors won't be completely finished at the Veer, but that shop front will hopefully be improved by the end of the month. So it's a long journey, but the town council hasn't shied away from it being a long journey. That we are committed to being there throughout. And before Annette picks up on some of the young trade development of it, I just want to pick up on your queries about youth. I have a massive aspiration, as does your youth and community team, about growing Grove Corner. We were unable to apply for the funding recently because we were the wrong side of a footpath. Which was so, so frustrating, but there was a pot of money available to improve youth facilities. We will continue to search for those funding opportunities because we believe Grove Corner does meet the needs of some young people, but we know that it doesn't meet the needs of every single young person. It will never meet the needs of all, but we think we could do more and grow our services there and we're committed to doing that. But what we have been able to do, from April the first, we have got two years' worth of funding for £100,000 for youth work for Dunstable East. You're going to see detached youth workers in this area and around all the way up to the City of William area, that part of Dunstable. Nine hours a week of detached youth work, because you're right, they're out and about on the streets. To have a centre-based activity isn't necessarily what those guys really want right now. But then we hope to work with them, do what we call co-design with those young people about what would you like to see? Putting on activities, half-terms, holidays, and working in partnership with the leisure centre and using the expenses there that they're not actually using positively at the moment. So there is some great stories that are going to be coming over the next couple of years. But what I hope that says to you is that certainly from the town council perspective, we can see some of these issues and needs, but we're also committed to finding those solutions for them. But, yeah, you've got some ideas, I think, you know, there's other opportunities for us to work with residents like yourselves as well to help find those solutions. So thank you, but I'm just going to pass on to Annette.
Ooh, I'm going to do a big clap here. I want young people, I want young people to come to me to roam market. I want them to come and try out their ideas. And we are really invested in it this year. We have got a Young Trader Market on the 6th of July, we're actually taking part in the national competition. And I want young people from the ages of 16 to 30 to come along. For £10, we will provide free insurance, we'll provide a stall, we'll provide a table, we will provide support. And as part of that campaign as well, if they do really well, they'll go through to regionals, they will get some support from the Young Trader Market Federation and they can go all the way. They will get support from their business. We're also, as part of that, anybody that comes that is booked onto that Young Trader Market, we will give them the opportunity to trade five times during the year, during our markets, to get that experience, to grow their business, to really engage with the public and start to get to know what it's like to be a business. And we'll do that for £10. So we're really here to support our young people, any ideas, it could be a service, it could be something they make, something they grow, an idea, a service, we want them and I want to see them. So I would love to hear from anybody that is, that's a young person that wants to start their own business.
So do you go into like the local schools, like the 16 year olds and year eleven and tell them about this opportunity and then send them it? Or do you just rely on like parents telling you to?
So it's just brand new, so we've now just started doing it on social media. I've spoken to Grove Corner who have access to the school, so it's going out there. I have actually spoken to Chambers of Commerce who have gone out to like the sixth form schools, the colleges and the universities and it's gone out to them. As much as I'd like to go and speak to everybody, I am one person, so I'm just relying on all the partners that I've spoken to about this. But the more we do this and the more that we speak about it, and I'm hoping to do a video at some point and that will go out on social media, then, then, yes. But, you know, the more sharing that we have on social media, there's posters out on the street, it's on talk of the town. So I'm hoping all the avenues that I'm trying to push this out on will get to the people that we need to get to.
Thank you very much, Annette, thank you. There is one more question at the back, can I put your hand up, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the zeal that we just got from our residents, yeah, is what I think Dunstable need. For this town to sort of move to the next level, to the next place that we all want to see, to back to a vibrant town, we need passionate people, people that have vision. If you don't mind me dragging you to the word of scripture, it says, without a vision, the people perish, which means if we have vision of things, how we want to see this town manifest itself, then those things are possible as long as we have the people that have the vision and the passion to come together and bring those, you know, vision. So two things I want to pick up from your, what you said there, number one about the shops. Why don't we have diversity of stalls? I think that's necessary, I think we've, in our town council, we've discussed this. I remember speaking to Madam Mayor about this, I believe it was last year at some point. And I think what we need really is a strategy of what do we really want to see? And then bring that to the Chamber of Commerce and say, these are businesses that we want to see in the centre of town. And then bring the partners, like the property owners together, okay? And it might take some time, but as long as you have that partnership with the business, with the owners of the properties and, you know, people like this Chamber of Commerce, they will give that information to the business owner, the startup, to say, in a place like Dunstable where we have the population, it's all about giving people a clear vision that they can make money. Business people are in here to make money. And if you will give them a clever strategy, this is the population of Dunstable, this is why we think you need to be here. I think you will get this, you know, diversity of stalls that we're talking about, like landlords, you know, but can we persuade them to come to Dunstable? I think we need a Chamber of Commerce to do some of that work for us. And Madam Mayor, I think that partnership is what we really need to work on. I've discussed this with you. We say, why do we have so much bubbles? The reality is, I have to confess, let me just put my hand up. I'm a stakeholder that own one of the properties in Dunstable. And I am a tailor by trade and so the reality is whoever comes to the landlord is what they're going to take. So without the strategy, without the vision, without the plan, that bring the, you know, these property owners into the same room and talk to them about the vision, a clear vision, you can't talk to them, you know, but if you show them a clear vision and then the people that are willing to invest, that are willing to take this store based on the strategy that we have to bring to the table, then the plan will work. So unfortunately, not until we have a clear vision, Madam Mayor, you know, it would not work. We need a clear vision for this town, we need, you know, if we want one store doing that, one store doing that. If you come to me as one of the stakeholder, I would agree to you, but I need to see your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? No? So I'd just like to then draw this meeting to a close and thank everybody for attending this evening. I think it's been a really important meeting that we've had and a great opportunity to hear what's available for our businesses. Thank you to all of our guest speakers this evening. And thank you to everybody that's attempted to answer questions from the audience as well for us as well, much appreciated. We will go to Central Beds and ask those pertinent points and we will try to summarise and get some responses from them. Obviously, that may take some time for some queries to filter through and responses to come back, but we will do that. But thank you very much for coming, everybody, and I wish you all well. Thank you.